Go ahead and start. Welcome to the City of Daly City Recreation Commission Meeting. Today is Tuesday, February 23. Visit Daly City's virtual meeting website to register to attend the virtual meeting via Zoom. Watch the live stream of the meeting and view the agenda at bit.ly/daylycity23. COVID-19 Announcement on Public Meetings pursuant to Governor Newsom's Executive Order N2920. Members of the Daly City Recreation Commission and staff will participate in this meeting via teleconference. Members of the public are encouraged to watch the meeting via livestream at bit.ly/daylycity23. For public participation, there are two ways to submit public comment. First, send written comments by 2:00 p.m. on meeting day. And second, register to speak at the meeting via Zoom. To submit a comment and writing, please email active@dailycity.org and write public comment in the subject line. In the body of the email include the item number and/or title of the item as well as your comments. All comments received by 4:00 p.m. will be emailed to the Recreation Commission members and included as an add to packet on the city's website prior to the meeting. Those comments received after 4:00 p.m. will be added to the record and shared with the Recreation Commission members for the public meeting. Comments are not read aloud into the record. To speak at the meeting, you must register to join via Zoom. The city requests that you complete your registration by 5:00 p.m. on the meeting date. After registering, you will receive a confirmation email containing instructions on how to join the meeting, including a unique link. Your address and email will not be disclosed to the public. Public comment is limited to two minutes maximum. To register to speak at the meeting via Zoom, visit bit.ly/23zoomreg. You must familiarize yourself with Zoom prior to the meeting. When you would like to speak on an item during the public comment portion of the meeting, you'll need to use the raise hand feature on Zoom. The city will not be providing technical support. If you do not wish to speak, the city requests that you watch the live stream of the meeting on the city's virtual meeting website. Persons with disabilities who require auxiliary aids or services in attending or participating in this meeting should call the office of the city clerk at 991-8078 as soon as possible. This meeting is now called to order. And we'll start with the pledge to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and with liberty and justice for all. And first up is the vote call.
Commissioner Pastor. Commissioner Ortiz. And Chair Luna.
Okay, moving on to approval of tonight's agenda. Do we have a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
A motion to approve tonight's agenda.
One second.
A second. Great. And on to approval of the minutes for November 24, 2020. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
Yes, I motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
And on to the director's report.
Thank you, Chair Luna. The first item Romeo Benson was going to be presenting, but I am taking his place this evening and would like to share with you. We submitted a application to receive an award for a dynamic program that we provided and we received the award from the CPRS District 4. And that award, I'm going to read the letter that we received. It says, "Congratulations to your agency on receiving the keys to the community award from California Park and Recreation Society District 4. This award recognizes your outstanding Daly City Recreation Sliced Program through which your agency demonstrated creativity and innovation in response to the pandemic. Parks and Recreation is an indispensable service which provides a diverse array of benefits to our communities, promoting physical, emotional, and mental well-being and fostering cohesion and resilience. It supports endless learning opportunities and strengthens social and intellectual growth in people of all ages and abilities. Parks and Recreation supports economic vitality by providing frontline jobs and childcare for the essential workforce. All these values and countless more are why Parks and Recreation continues to be the cornerstone upon which the wellness of our local communities is built. Through this award, we recognize your exceptional efforts to elevate these benefits in your community and reaffirm Parks and Recreation's status as an essential community service. And it was with deep gratitude for your passion and dedication, Michelle Bridgette Ragsdale, who is the president of the District 4 in CPRS." So this goes to our department. And I know that you all were able to review the sliced video. Now we have three under our belt and hope to have many more. But that's just one of the many programs, obviously. You know, you as Rec Commissioners have seen us through the pandemic. And I'm so very proud of the division and our department in just, like we said this a million times, but just turning on a dime and making a difference in the community through this pandemic. And I can just see us keep moving forward with that. And so the second piece of this, as you see these beautiful faces on our Zoom call, I'm very happy to present the Senior Services area. And there's Ann Cooney, Opal Fuller, Angelo Gnausio, David Setzer, Jennifer Durr, and Edgardo Bolaños. I'm going to just say before Ann takes over the reign, he has been promoted to the Administrative Assistant to position. So he'll be working directly with me and the Office Assistance and supporting the department in general and also working with Chayla in the library in different aspects of everything that we do. So congratulations, Bolaños.
Congratulations, Edgardo.
Thank you.
I turn the mic over to Ann Cooney.
Thank you very much, Denise. Is it okay if I share my screen? Would that be all right? Okay, I'm going to jump in and share my screen. So thank you very much for the opportunity, Commissioners, to present tonight. I'm very honored to be part of the Daly City Library and Recreation Team. It's particularly in the Senior, Active Adult Senior Services Division. I'll just be starting us off tonight, our presentation, but I'm very grateful to have Jen and Opal and Angelo and David here. And I hope they'll jump in if I misstate something as I go. So the mission of our division is to enhance the quality of life and promote wellness by providing social, educational, and recreational opportunities to all adults 50 years and older. When we had a chance, the Active Adult Senior Services team to present to the Recreation Commission back in November of 2019, little did we know what was ahead for our community, especially for the approximately 20,000 residents who are 60 years old or older. When we spoke back in 2019, one of the statistics I wanted to share was, I wanted to bring it forward again because this is something that truly, we had no idea how huge this would become. Being part of the Recreation Division, we are literally the literal home of fun and games. But sometimes fun is serious business and that can be very true for Senior Services and true during a pandemic like the one we're facing. So one of the statistics we talked about then that I just wanted to revisit is that loneliness. There have been many studies done to show that loneliness is just as lethal as smoking 15 cigarettes per day. And people who are experiencing loneliness or isolation have the 50% greater chance of dying prematurely than those with healthy social relationships. So as Jen often talks about with her staff team, this is about community building and relationships. And how have we accomplished that as we've moved forward? So one of the other things I talked a bit about back in November of 2019 were our partners. And I won't have time tonight to go into all of them, but I just want to underscore how so much of what has happened in the last year couldn't have happened without our partners. These are many of our essentially exterior partners. I also want to just take a moment before I go forward just to thank the City Manager's Office, Police Department, Fire, Public Works, Libraries, which I'll talk about a bit more. It's just been the most amazing year and it has been a complete and utter collaboration. A special shout out to our marketing team in Recreation. Just been incredible to see the creativity and what people have been able to produce. Apologies if I'm a little emotional as I was going through the slideshow a little bit ago. I just was kind of overwhelmed by how much has happened in the last year. Okay, so what have we done? We've had to pivot because this little lovely curve came at us early, early last year. First thing we did was hit the telephones as a team. So we had a wonderful staff team. You'll see Recreation and Library staffers here, Maria Orleman with Healthy Aging Response Team, as well as Janine Nelson jumping in with her Senior Services staff to help us make friendly calls. We started out by calling all of the active attendees to Opal and Angelo's Congregate Lunch Programs to let them know that our congregant lunches were shutting down, but the programs that were going to be coming available to them, which Opal and Angelo will talk more about in a bit. There have been thousands of calls made since early last spring. In addition to staff making friendly calls, we're lucky to partner on three different occasions with students with the Unitec College School of Nursing who made telehealth calls, really doing some serious checking up on our volunteers, our congregant lunch attendees, and other members of our senior community. And that crew, the group of one cohort of those students there were multilingual. They spoke five different languages, which was very helpful for us. Also, in terms of phone, we've had over 1,500 incoming calls just to what we turned into our Daly City Seniors hotline, the 991-8012 line. Every call's been received and responded to and we've offered information referral. We've enrolled people in our programs, including our meal programs. We've been able to be encouraging and provide warm referrals, effective referrals to our partner agencies. I want to shout out to the City Manager's Office, again, to many other departments within our city. Senior Services and Recreation weren't the only folks getting all these calls. So this is just a fraction of the many calls that have come in that have been handled by city staff. Okay, after we got off the phones, we hit the mails and this is a big shout out to our libraries in collaboration with Senior Services, but really very much from a leadership position. Chayla's team created the Youth Senior Pen Pal Program. I don't have the exact stats of how many, but this is safely pairing seniors with youth pen pal letter writers. And I've been ferrying letters back and forth between the Dodger Center and the Geller Library in Saramonti. So there's a lot of activity and it's been a real wonderful program. Also in the mail, we've continued to send out birthday cards to Dodger Senior Center volunteers every month. Well, we have a volunteer who's doing that to continue those messages. We've partnered with schools, including the Fernando Rivera School, who have done wonderful letters. Can just give you a sense, you know, here are some of these letters. Hi, I hope you're doing well, especially during the pandemic. The kids talk about their lives and ask the seniors their questions. So some wonderful engagement through the mail. We've also done a lot with email again, thanks to our Rec Division. We jumped into constant contact. Edgardo helped us download about 7,000 people who had participated, who were 50 years old or older and who had participated in recreation programs over past years. And we use that to create a universe of people to begin to email to, along with email addresses we had for volunteers and for members of the supporters of Dodger Senior Center. So since late last March, we've been getting out periodic e-news updates with everything from funnies and jokes and birthday wishes to a lot of important resource information, updates from our city manager and mayor. There's a little picture of David there. You can't see him all dressed up with the tree lighting, but this has been just a wonderful tool. We're now regularly emailing about 3,800 emails and have an open rate. More than half of them are getting read. So it's been a wonderful way to try to keep in touch and be in community. Well, everyone was working very hard setting up the official Daly City new website. Thanks again to our marketing team and to Jen for letting us set up a temporary dailycityseniors.org website. I'll talk a little bit more about that. We'll be looking at moving some of the things we did on that site to our brand new dailycity.org site. Again, thanks to Recreation and Romeo and Edgardo. We do have a Facebook presence for Daly City Seniors. We've built kind of an organic following, I think just over 200 seniors now. And it's been a wonderful way to get information out, but to also be interactive. And then we move into virtual programming. And some of the first virtual programming we were able to do out of Senior Services goes to a committee. I'm sorry, this picture cuts off, but Jen and Leslie, along with Romeo and Edgardo, did an amazing job producing what I ended up calling a variety show. Opal did some cooking demonstrations. Jen and Leslie did wonderful fitness pieces. You see here dance and music, but they were just wonderful experiences. And we had three of those, almost hour and a half long programs, discussion group. The first, when we had all of our Dodger Center Advisory and Plating Council members attended, this lower picture was from today. They continue and it's just a wonderful group of seniors that start with an icebreaker and a hot topic and check in about how they were. And it's amazing to see community developing online. Leslie and Jen have also provided a lot of leadership for a wonderful weekly Go For Life Functional Fitness class. This is just one screenshot of today's class. I believe there were over 30 participants, Jen. Is that right today? I think this is a lot of fun, great music. Very customized. Leslie does an amazing job to help people focus on certain areas of pain or gaining strength. She's also doing some work now in nutrition for seniors, which is just really wonderful. We have some volunteers along with our staff who are offering virtual programming. Frank Damon, who's been a volunteer at the Dodger Center for more than six years and is a retired history and social studies instructor, does a weekly virtual current events class, which each one of these links here goes to about a 30-page PDF that Frank creates for me every week that I post. And his seniors read the information in advance and they come ready to discuss the current events of the day. There have been a little bit of monitoring on my part when there have been a few choice words about certain political activities, but for the most part, it's a great group. Another volunteer, Gloria Solis, is doing a twice monthly sing-along, which we learned a lot about this Zoom platform. So we do mute everyone as we sing, but we all raise our voices together. Gloria prepares a really wonderful half-hour program with themes, different songs, history of the songs. And it's truly great. We've had amazing feedback on this program. So we're piloting it and I hope something like it can continue. A lot of our ukulele players have found that this is a venue for them to use. So they come with their ukuleles ready and their songbooks. We've done fall prevention, health education programs online. Some of them are, this is a 45-minute video on fall prevention by Sarah Agan Thornhill, a wonderful occupational therapist who did this for us at no cost. It's a tremendous resource that's still online. And a shout out to our libraries. Recreation, but Senior Services in particular, has leaned very heavily on all of the amazing programs, virtual and otherwise, that are offered by our libraries, including the curbside pickup is back. So just a few mentions here, the trivia games. Today, we just announced the Dial a Story program, which is in three languages. So libraries, thank you. This has meant so much, a literal lifeline for our seniors. Other virtual programs, we had holiday events. Thank you to the City Manager's Office and Denise for the leadership on this. We actually had events on Thanksgiving Day, Christmas Day, New Year's Eve at Noon, which we called our Noon Year's Eve program. You'll see here, people have their funny hats on and really came together in song. We had poet laureate of San Mateo County do a reading, former poet laureate of Pacifica. So some really wonderful events to be able to do them on the holiday when people might have experienced kind of the most exquisite loneliness was really lovely. We partnered with Arts and Culture Commission to kind of put in the virtual space the senior art exhibit that was supposed to have been in City Hall last May. So on our temporary website, you can go there and click on an artist and see their different pieces, see their bio, if they were brave enough to give us a bio. So that's been a wonderful experience and we're still adding artists to that. We've had the students at Fernando Rivera did virtual Valentines this year, which we were also able to include with Opal's Meals on Valentine's Day. And created a little video, put that on Facebook so it could get a broader audience besides just our meal program participants. Just quickly, we've got more virtual programming coming, continuing to work with Peninsula Family Service, who has a peer counseling program. We have an event coming up on March 9th, Pacific Stroke Association, a Zoom event. That's a collaboration with the Stroke Association and with Pacifica Senior Services. We continue to work very closely with the county, doing as much education around vaccines as we can through our social media platforms. We've done programs on Medi-Cal, offered programs with Mission Hospice. So as I said at the beginning, it has been so much about our partnerships that Daly City Senior Services has had for a long time and really been able to leverage to stay in community with our seniors. We did do an in-person event. Again, thank you to City Manager's Office, but huge thanks to Daly City PD and to Fire. We visited, we drove through the entire city with a police escort, visiting some of Daly City's eldest veterans. And it was just an exquisite, wonderful day back in November. And it was pretty terrific. Thanks to Gina in the Rec Division, who was part of that with us as well. Couple, another shout out to the library here, to our mayor, to our City Manager's Office. Back in October, the city was given a donation of 80 laptops, 80 laptops. City Manager's Office asked that those be kind of prioritized for seniors if possible. So I just want to thank Chayla very much, Natalie, everyone in the library. Rather than me sitting over in Dodger Senior Center trying to create some kind of a lending program, our library has taken on these laptops, installed Chrome Management software and is incorporating them fully into a lending program so they can be put to use as soon as possible. We're hoping in the coming weeks to bridge the digital divide for our seniors. Today, we had a wonderful little program. First time we had a few people safely on campus, but our partner Peninsula Family Service was able to provide four of the seniors that have been participating in the Get Appy program, learning apps. They were presented with brand-new tablets and it was a really wonderful and safe day. Just want to make a quick mention that age-friendly Daly City work continues. Daly City was designated an age-friendly community last year. City Manager's Office, Mayor, now Council Member Sylvester, has been a tremendous leader. Our thanks to Sherri, Coral Moreno, and to Phyllis Rizzi, who have been the co-chairs of this task force. We now are entering our planning phase, putting together a five-year plan. Couple things just about the facilities. There's Greg before he retired. We have cleaned every room out, inventoried, painted, painting's beginning. So floors are being polished, so we'll be ready when we open. And at this point, this is the heart of our program, continues to be the nutritious, delicious, wonderful meals that Opal and her entire team, which includes many of the recreation staffers now. So I'll come back to these slides when Opal's ready. Thank you. I didn't mean to rush. There was just so many little things I wanted to share. Thank you.
Thank you so much for the presentation. Like I learned so much and it's just amazing.
I think Opal, she was, Ann's transitioning to Opal. Opal, would you like me to put the slides back up?
Um, no. The last slide she showed was one of our menus. So that was February's menu. If she can put it back up, I'd like to show this one.
Yeah.
For the menu.
And plus, there's a nice picture of Edgardo. Okay. Okay. Oops, sorry.
So those are our wonderful monthly menus. I've been producing that menu for about five years. I've been with the city for about 15 and food services for the last 12 and in this current position for the last two years. But I've been doing the menu planning for the last five years for the city. So this is one of our menus here that goes out monthly to all of our clients. I produced a menu, then Edgardo puts these wonderful finishing touches on it. As you can see, it's a monthly menu. And then on the back half, we do a little nutritional education just to keep the seniors alert and let them know about things they can work on while they're at home. Like this one was a fiber nutritional education. So it was all about soluble fiber and all about ways to get fiber in while they're sitting at home during this crazy time. Next month, we'll be doing an in-service training and we'll have Chris from our Recreation Team. He'll be doing an in-person CPR class. So that'd be great for us too. So since this pandemic started, Edgardo and I, David and I, we have formed this wonderful team of all full-timers. And we have been producing 750 meals per week since the beginning of the pandemic, non-stop. We took two days off when everything happened. And just like Ann said and Denise said, we just flipped on a dime and turned our program into a to-go program. We have about 60 homebound patients, I mean, patients, I'm sorry. We have about 60 homebound clients that we service once a week. So once a week, those 60 people get five meals for the week. They get their fruit, their vegetables, their milk, their whole wheat, their grains. They get everything they need to keep them great during this time. We have about 60 grab-and-go people that come and pick up their meals on a Monday. And sometimes I go out there and I talk to them, I go out with Denise and I ask our clients, you know, what they think about the food. I love constructive prison. So just Monday, I was out there speaking to a couple of people and the feedback you get is wonderful. So just like Ann, I may get emotional too. But just hearing them say that these meals has been saving them, that the meals are great. We had one lady just tell me about her diabetes and she's no longer taking medicine and her numbers are doing great and the portions are great. And this has been the best thing for her during this pandemic. A lot of our seniors haven't suffered financially because of this pandemic, but they haven't been able to go out and get their meals. Some of them don't cook. So the ones that were coming in, sitting with me once a week and eating in the dining room daily, they're now picking up their meals once a week. They say it's great for them. All my menus are county-approved. I try to make them as nutritional as possible, as less sodium as possible, especially now since they're just sitting at home and not getting much exercise. As wonderful as this program has been to the seniors, I think it's been just as fulfilling to us too as a staff because we watched the numbers and they've been consistent during this whole pandemic. So that lets us know that they need these meals. And to have that responsibility on us, knowing that these people need these meals. I mean, it's great both ways. I get a lot of gratitude from people and I enjoy doing this. This has been one of my, this is my favorite job. I couldn't, I wouldn't trade this job for nothing. Cooking in the kitchen every day with Edgardo and David Setzer and coming up with all these meals and all the menu planning and just trying our best to be there for the senior community right now is top priority for us. As you can see, we try to keep things fun. That's the March menu you're looking at. So we do a birthday celebration once a month and we're also doing a St. Patty's Day celebration. So even though they don't get to come in and celebrate the way they're used to, we're still trying to make sure they get that in their home. So they still will be getting their corned beef and cabbage next month. With the birthday celebration, we put a little goodie in there that has a birthday sticker on there so that they're celebrating birthdays once a month. And like Ann says, it's been pretty consistent. And the people are calling and they're signing up and they're needing it. And we have been providing since the beginning of the pandemic. It's been great. You can see in that picture, Edgardo was finishing off one, that's probably 150 meals. It's been great. You can see in that picture, Edgardo was finishing off of one, that's probably a hundred and fifty meals of just one of the the day's work. So like, that's probably a hundred and fifty meals of probably stuffed bell peppers. And we do five meals per week and then we service them all on Mondays. So I think we've been doing great. It's been really fulfilling for all of us in the kitchen. Pretty much it for me and really said it all. And the numbers speak for themselves, you know? It's been great working with, learning my staff. I have a new family now, you know, I really, I do miss my senior friends, but I've got to know, I've got to know the staff so much better. Like we're a little family in there. And, you know, we argue, we fuss like a little family, we make up like a little family and we just keep on going and it's been great. It's really helpful for all of us during this time because we've been there for each other and there for the community too. And it really shows when they show up and they're happy to get these meals. They open their trunk, they're smiling. Denise is smiling. She knows everybody by first name. So it's been great. And the same with Angelo. These same meals are provided to Angelo's clients too. So I know he gets the same gratification from his clients too, because they do like to call and say thank you. And, you know, we get these wonderful cards from people and we get wonderful emails and it's been great both on both ends. So all the giving that we have been doing, we are enjoying the receiving too, because they are very grateful. And if you ever want to see our production and you have time, come on down with your mask, do a little social distancing and you can see what we do in that kitchen down at Dozer, producing those of seven hundred and fifty to eight hundred meals a week in that kitchen and getting them out to the community. And we've been doing that since day one. I think we took two days off during the pandemic. On the thirteenth, March thirteenth of last year, we got the big, the big word of we're going to be shutting down and and at the time Joseph was our director and he said, are you guys, what do you guys, what can you do? So by March sixteenth, we were back up and running again. And we've been servicing those same people ever since. So we do know that they need us just as much as we need them. They're wonderful. Thank you.
I like that message that you said about that one participant who was formerly a diabetic, but the doctors are looking good.
Yeah.
Encouraging that you're helping them meet that challenge. And I'd like to say that Anne and Opal and the entire department that's putting all these meals together. You are the angels helpers. And without you and and the staff and the support of Daily City and and all the hands that are making all those seven hundred meals a week, I think you said?
Yes.
That you, you are a blessing in disguise. You are the angels helpers. So thank you very much.
Yes, it's been great. And they do, they, they show their gratitude when they pull up. When they, sometimes Denise has to kind of walk away because they'll talk forever. You know, just to see someone and talk about the food and he says, oh, this is awful. This is our cook. Oh, wonderful. Nice to meet you. When can I get a little soul food? So I had to tell him right now, you don't need a little soul food because you're, you're not moving much and you don't need that sodium. But it's been great feeding them.
Thank you very much.
Angelo, did you have anything that you'd like to add? Can't hear you, Angelo.
Okay, there you go. So not much to add, just a big thank you for Opal. I know I come with last minute updates asking, hey, can I cook something on this day? Cook something here and there? And Opal's been really flexible to help me cook in the kitchen or allowing me to cook in the kitchen and so for Lincoln, not much is happening. The, the only big thing that we have going on is although even with the pandemic, we're still doing our AARP tax aid. And which is, a lot of our participants are seniors, but it is open for everyone else. We are doing appointments. We just started our first week and we are fully booked for February already. And if anyone still wants to try and get their taxes done, you can call Lincoln Community Center at six five zero nine nine one eight zero one eight, Monday through Thursday from eight thirty AM to one PM to make an appointment. And I'm sorry, it's my, can you hear my kid screaming in the background? And then we do our taxes every Wednesday and Thursday and to minimize the, you know, interaction, it is different. We, we did it last year and we're able to do it successfully from June to August. And we're hoping to at least be able to do half of what we normally do. And it would, the way taxes work is that people would come make an appointment and drop off all their paperwork with our tax counselors. And then they would prepare it on their own time and then we would call the clients back up to set up another appointment for them to pick up all their paperwork and transmit their returns. Other than that, Lincoln is just doing the lunch program and AARP. That's all our updates.
Anne, are you ending the or? Anne Cooney, are you ending?
Um, I think that was, that was our update. If anyone has questions, I, I will just wanted to thank Jen for everything in her leadership, but the programs we're talking about, all the budgeting, all the paperwork, especially the congregant lunch, our, our emergency lunch programs, the budgeting, the invoicing, closeouts, desktop audits, that's some heavy, heavy lifting and it's not as much fun as singing in the kitchen with Opal and Zeds. So I just want to acknowledge that piece that's a huge, huge piece that allows the city to realize some subsidy for all these meals. It, as Opal said, it's a great team and we're grateful to be here and grateful to have been able to continue to work through this period. So, and thank you commissioners for your leadership as volunteers. We appreciate you very much.
Yeah, I just, I just want to say congratulations to everybody. It's, you know, honestly, just hearing today is really heartwarming. I think I personally needed to hear what was going on and, and it's just really impressive to see just, you know, we're almost a year into shelter in place and for you to not really have a break and dedicate all your time to the community is just amazing and Daily City is absolutely, you know, blessed to have all of you. So we, we thank you so much for that. And I, and I hope we all get to see each other in person here.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you guys for, I mean, I counted almost ten different programs. You guys completely flipped because of the pandemic. Like whether it's a, a video casting for the seniors online to the to go meal programs. Thank you guys so much for that, because we always think about the after school programs and then the activities during the weekends, but from nine to five PM every single day of the week, this is the seniors world. So thank you guys so much for holding everything down and pivoting, like you said, and pivoting almost every single program you guys had to keep it going. And like Opal said, the numbers don't lie. The numbers keep showing up consistently and that means the programs are doing well. The response for the community has been consistent despite no matter what challenges came forth. So thank you guys again.
If, I guess that's it for the director's report. I guess we can move on to the commissioner's report. Are there any reports?
This one here. My wife and I enjoy taking walks when the weather's nice and it's not so windy. So our, our most recent walk was a walk into Geller Park and around the inner part of the park. And I noticed that they're almost finished with some form of construction over there by the picnic shed area. And I was wondering, are other parks kind of like in the middle of their their constructions as well, similar to what Geller Park is?
Currently, Geller received and Steven or Leilani can correct me if I'm wrong. There was funding through the county as well as some funds that the city had. So that was combined together. The tennis courts and basketball courts had resurfacing done. We have a new bathroom, outdoor bathroom that is coming into play. The picnic shelter area is going to have a reface done on it. The old barbecue pits will come out and new pits will come in. And the playground was all new. And there is a charging station now that is going to be in effect as well. So Geller Park is going to be hip.
It's stepped up.
Yeah, kicking it up a notch. And I think all of the courts have lights now, including the basketball courts.
Wow, I didn't realize that. Yeah. Okay, great. Look good. Looks good. Yeah. So congratulations on that.
Jack, you could get your game on now on the courts when they open up.
I'm watching my knees now. Thank you.
Do you have any other commissioner reports? Okay. And moving on to any announcements and communications.
So we do have one announcement. We are partnering. Obviously, we cannot do Spring Fun Day in the capacity that it would have been done. So we're transitioning this year into a movie night. And we're partnering with the Daily City Host Lions Club as well as Republic Services to provide a Friday night drive in movie. It's going to be for fifty, the first fifty cars are that register through our active system are going to receive a family. I'm going to call it a family fun pack. When they enter, they'll get set up. They'll be, Edgardo can give me a wink or not, and two to three screens will be potentially showing the movie Karate Kid. And it should be a great event. It'll be starting at seven PM. We'll open the parking lot at six PM. And again, all of the cars have to register through our active system. So unless we don't sell out in advance, there might be opportunity for cars to slide in, but it is a free event for the first fifty vehicles that register. And that's the only announcement that I have other than the announcement I made about Edgardo.
By the way, when, when is the movie night? I didn't catch the date.
Sorry, Friday, March twenty sixth. Good catch.
Got it. Great. Thank you. That sounds fun.
Yeah.
Yeah, just, just to dial back on commission report, this one thought came to mind. I notice we have two openings vacancies on the commission. Has there been any potential applicants submitted their interest to join in as yet? Or I'll put the word out for those who are watching on, on the program here tonight. Take a look at our, our Daily City Commission's link on dailycity.org site and or come visit us at the Recreation Department to ask questions about joining in as participating in your community as a commissioner. So you're invited. Thank you.
Thank you for that call out. Next up, any public comments?
No, I don't have any public comments that are pending.
Okay, so this, if there are no public comments or any other announcements, this meeting is now adjourned. Our next meeting will be Tuesday, March twenty three at seven PM. Thank you. Have a good evening, everybody.
Have a good evening.